Hi, welcome to Wairega City Council. Please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Now, my lady, did you say?
You could just ask for public comment, but he's ready.
Okay, public comment. Come on down.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
On behalf of the Wairega Elks, the largest fraternal organization in the world, we want to present the city council with this beautiful flag to fly above, I guess it's over there by the cemetery, the Catholic cemetery, kind of overlooking the high five. And we present you with this.
Thank you very much. And I understand your first name is Ernie and your last name is?
Lad.
Lad?
Yes, Ernie Lad.
Ernie Lad, and you're the exalted ruler of our local Elks branch, correct? Thank you so much for coming down. I appreciate it. We all do.
Why don't you come on up and go right down there in the middle there? And then what I can do is, we're gonna take a picture. Is that what we do? You guys all wanna be over there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Now you're gonna tax my ability. I mean, you look like a jack-in-the-box.
I know. It's like, I'm gonna get on the first side here.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that's, that's been... Okay, I'm gonna take another one because that's the main thing I learned. I'll even take one this way. Okay?
Awesome.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
If you want, we can pass that round to Don.
Okay, let me read a little blurb here and we'll be right with you, Don.
I'll be less than five minutes.
Okay. This is a time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section, section of the, session of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regard to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. You don't have to say a word, Don.
Well, thanks so much, you see. Good evening. First of all, I have to complain about you guys having your meetings when I'm on vacation. This is, I've missed two in a row now because of that. I'll quit having vacations. I'm Don Hall, Wairega. A week ago, when I was on vacation at last National Volcano Park, which was wonderful to get out of the smoke for a week, we were out hiking right along the edge of the wilderness and along King's Creek. There, to the right, propped up against a tree, was a rock about this big around brightly painted red with a big purple butterfly on it. And on the back of it, it said, "Take a picture of where this is. Post it to such-and-such page. Hide it somewhere else so someone else can find it." Now, I'm not very keen on the glitter in national parks. And that was litter. It was something that someone had brought in from outside the park. Even though they had placed it carefully where they had, it was still not where it belonged. So I took it to the park service and I told them about it. The reason I tell you that story is we now are having the same thing happen in our parks, in Wairega, where there's this, it's a fad to paint rocks and to go hide them and stick them in places hither and yon and then have other people find them and get all excited about it and do it again and again and again. Now, in that it's a fad, my guess is it's going to go away before too very long. But I would really hope that the city isn't doing anything to encourage this to continue. Nature's nature. And it has rocks in it. And some of them are really, really pretty. And some of them are really blah. But, to me at least, going in and seeing these painted rocks just scattered around, and I've seen two or three of them in Greenport now. I just, I really don't like it. It means litter. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Anyone else? Okay. Item number one. Discussion, possible action. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. Approval ratification of payments issued from September 8th through September 21st, 2017. B, approval of the minutes of the meeting held September 7th, 2017. Counsel? Anyone care to remove an item? And if there's no discussion, I'll accept a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're good. Number two. Discussion, possible action, adoption resolution amending the 2017-2018 budget to incorporate a list of projects funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Is Cynthia going to report on this?
No, I won't.
Okay. Matt?
Good evening. The resolution here before you is, as you mentioned, the funds from SB 1 start to flow into our roadways in the city. The $44,252 we have looked at carefully through our payment strategy program. And in an effort to stretch every dollar as far as we can, we are recommending that we utilize this this funding for chip sealing. You may have seen, we recently, last week, week before, got Fairlane chip sealed, West Side Road chip sealed, and the upper end of South Street chip sealed. Stretching those dollars as far as we can. The SB 1 has a trailer bill, AB 135, that allows for reimbursement for recent projects, so it streamlined us and got us really running, got money on the ground before the money's actually here. So this would be used toward that. And then we also have a list of projects for next year, 2018. And most of the, like I say, most of our rehabilitation projects in the near future will be chip sealed. I don't know if anybody's been out there and seen it, but it turned out pretty nice. A little bit of rattling right now, but it'll, it'll clean up. Get it fog sealed and painted out here pretty soon.
Nice. Questions from council, discussion?
Well, I know the chip sealing works real good. Because today I was up in Medford all day for a tax class and I had to drive on a recently chip sealed portion of the road that wasn't that good before. And I'm amazed how good a job they did with chip seal. I think that's definitely gonna prolong the life of the road.
It does. They can last up to about 15 years if they're properly maintained and getting kept fog sealed. Our maintenance division spent the last three or four years prepping out West Side Road. And I don't know how many people remember how bumpity bumpity West Side was with big wide gaps.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't drive like that anymore. So we hope to get a long time out of it.
So is there any, SB 1, is there any cons to this whole thing? I mean, anything that we should know of that...
No, it's gonna augment our streets funding. We're gonna stretch every penny as far as we can.
Awesome.
I think one thing, not the con, but that there's quite a few reporting requirements for this and so there's a little more overhead than just giving like the gas tax money. And that's more for accountability of these funds and how they're used to the state.
So the paperwork for this is the downside?
It is. We are grateful for the money.
Mm-hmm.
Very much so. Yeah. But it does have some reporting requirements and accountability requirements of. And this is, adopting this resolution is part of that process.
Okay.
The accountability of SB 1 is so that various jurisdictions submit their plans. And then the state, when they award the money, can say what projects are going on throughout the state. So it's a real good way to let the public know what's happening with the money that the state collects.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution amending the budget to incorporate the list of projects funded by SB 1.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three. Discussion of status of Greenhorn Park Host. Councilmember Kay.
So last, the last meeting, I brought that up. Because I had a lot of comments on having a park host again. Or bringing that up again, I should say. I think in lieu of all the activity that's been going on up at the park, I think it'd definitely be something advisable for us to have. Just recently, matter of fact, we had something down there at the, the Siski... What is it? Natural or the nature, whatever you wanna say here. I'll spit it out in a second. Where they grow plant life.
They're hardly native, the native plant.
Yeah, native plant, ornithorym, Siski ornithorym. Anyways, they just had an issue just recently too with them. So it's, even though that's not part of the park, I think, you know, if we keep stuff from happening up at the park, I think it would help even those situations too. So anyways, that's why I brought it up. And I know you've got some info on that, so I'll let you run from there.
Yes, as, as promised, I was going to give you a verbal staff report on where we are. It has been more complicated than we expected each step along the way to get this going. But what we have done now is the park host opportunity is out being advertised right now. One of the places that, and we think that one of the best places is this, what's on the second page and what's in front of you called Work Camper News. And this is a publication that is specifically set up for people that want to go around the country with their RVs and either be park hosts or work in other jobs and that sort of thing. So there is a advertisement in that. We also have it up on our website and probably a couple of other places that I didn't get off the email before I came over here this evening. So it is out there. It's taken a while. This will be somewhat, this is new for us, so we're gonna go through the process and and the first the, the time when somebody can be the park host can vary. You know, from, and I think in here it says from one to six months. It could be renewed, what, that, but we'll see how it works. We'll see whether people are interested. There is a small stipend with it so that they can live here, we're giving them water and 200 bucks. And we have some expectations. Oh, yeah. He knows a lot more about than I do.
The to your point of having a presence out there, the maintenance division has an electric car. It's a gem. They call it a gem car. Battery operated, charge it up. And that will be stationed at the park for the camp host to use daily on rounds. So it looks, looks like an official vehicle, because it is an official vehicle. Picking up the litter, finding the little graffiti and maybe finding some rocks. But they'll be out there cruising around, so that, that presence will be visible. Like you say, that the arboretum is not park proper.
Right.
But it is city property.
Yeah.
So that'll be part of it.
Is this something that looks like, like next season, then I take it? Like, would this be something that we'd be starting possibly like early spring then? Is what we're looking at, or sooner?
So the site's ready to plug into.
The site is everything's ready, rock and roll, it's just about finding somebody that's ready to step up to the plate then, huh?
Right.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, kind of, that way we can... It's, it's not as busy in Greenhorn Park, but Greenhorn Park is still busy during the winter season, so...
Just for me alone.
Yeah, exactly.
I got to use it cross-country skiing last year.
So did I. Yes, it was nice a few times.
Yeah, we might regulate that out. But yeah, so...
Okay, Matt, where is that vehicle stored during off-hours so it doesn't get vandalized? Is it stored in the park?
It'll be stored right there behind the restroom that we converted into a storage unit. So half of that restroom, we, we knocked some interior walls out and took the plumbing out, so it's a storage room for tools and trash bags and trash cans and all the hand tools that this, these folks would need. And then the other side, we remodeled into a, an actual restroom, a real bathroom with a shower in the corner. We installed washer dryer hookups, things of that nature. So there's a hot water heater in there. So they don't, you don't necessarily have to use the restroom in your trailer, which, small quarters.
Right.
Couple of people could use that one.
And where would the trailer be at, right?
The, the concrete slab, just to the east side of that building that we poured in there.
Okay.
Little bit of light dress-up work next spring on the lawn that we put in. We just put a little small lawn in just so those folks have somewhere nice of their own to go sit and hang out.
Hold down the dust.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No.
Can you actually get a lifetime driving record printout from the DMV? Lifetime driving record?
Is that making her hurt?
No. Go look.
I don't know. I, I think that we copied that from someplace else, so...
Typically, the driving records that we pull for new hires are full driving records.
Oh, wow. That's pretty cool.
So is there only gonna be one host? Because the park is divided into basically two parts. I mean, if you're up top, you can't really see what's going on down below.
Would you like to ask questions at the podium?
You know, the only reason why they, they say that is because that's the only way you're gonna get recorded. So people who listen at home can hear you. Otherwise, otherwise it sounds, it sounds, you're gonna, you're gonna get an answer, but it's like, I don't know what they were talking about. They, it's not a, I know it sounds awkward. They're not trying to give you a hard time.
Yes, they are. Okay, fine. Okay. Domari Autry, Iowa, Wairega. And I'm wondering if they're gonna have two hosts because lower Greenhorn cannot be seen exactly from upper Greenhorn. Are they, are they gonna use the vehicle to monitor?
The, the two-part concept is really a misnomer locally. It is Greenhorn Park. There's two parking lots and two place structures. So us locals call it upper or lower. We, we, we talk about it like it's two parts. But no, the answer is one park host for Greenhorn Park. That they will be roaming around. That's what they get their stipend for, is to do those rounds. And locking and unlocking the gates. So they will be around the park. They won't just be holed up at the airport. We do have additional camp host site built at Deer Creek Way for future use too. So that would be another one in the future.
And on Overland?
There's one park host.
On Overland too, as well?
No.
No? Okay.
No, that's Greenway. It's not, so middle of the town. We didn't think it would be a, a good spot to have one there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? I think this was a discussion-only item.
Correct. We wanted to let you know what was going on.
All right, sounds good. Let's move on to number four. Discussion, possible action, approve a supplemental appropriation of $14,000 for tree removal at Greenhorn Park. Matt, this is you again.
Yes, so Ben Miller, our maintenance and operations manager, contacted four tree removal companies after he met with an arborist, a licensed arborist. The the lower lawn at Upper Greenhorn, the main lawn at Upper Greenhorn, has some sick, dead, and dying trees in it. Actually, a number of months ago, a very large portion of which fell off onto a family that was picnicking at the table and was nearly catastrophic. So we called the arborist in immediately. We got it, it's not good. There's 11 trees there that need to come out. One of those, I believe, is a red willow that Jerry Mosier asked that we looked at a little bit closer. Maybe we'll try to save that one by trimming it up a little bit instead of taking it down. It's not 100% if we're gonna be able to save it, but we will do what we can with that input from the friends of Greenhorn and the SGPGA. So there's 11, 10 or 11 trees that need to come out. And we don't have the money in the budget. We didn't plan on this. When we wrote the budget, we hadn't spoken to an arborist and looked that closely at the trees. As I've said a few times in the past, it's, I don't like to cut down trees. I don't know, nobody does. We will replant.
We will rebuild.
That's up to some more research from staff too on exactly what trees to put in. We have street trees lists for trees that grow well next to sidewalks, that don't lift and things like that. But in the parks, we have some more options. So there'll be some further discussion at staff level about which trees and and how big of trees we can afford. Because we don't really wanna go in there and throw some little ones in that the deer will chomp down.
Yeah. Yeah, that is a huge option.
So that's what we're asking for, is a supplemental appropriation for $14,000 for the removal. We had, reached out to four different tree companies and only had one response due to the size of the project.
When was it that you reached out to these people? I mean, is it something that now, I mean, obviously we need to do something right away now, but is it something that we could have them look at again?
Uh, no, I, I wouldn't. I weren't against that. Ben did his work. He did his job as efficiently as possible and spent a lot of time trying, you know, recalling and calling and recalling folks.
That's all we can do.
And it's, with the drought conditions in California, the last 10 years, there's dead trees everywhere. These guys are busy. They're busy guys. And then some of our local companies are just too small to take down a job that size.
And more questions?
Yes. I'm concerned about the replacement trees. Is that gonna take an additional budget appropriation later? What could you determine what you wanna do? Because depending on the size of the trees you get and whether you gotta put wiring around them to protect them from the deer eating them, stuff like that, I anticipate it's gonna at least cost several thousand dollars.
It, you'll probably find it in the next budget.
Okay.
It, this won't be something that we jump right into and throw some quick-growing trees in there. We don't wanna do that because we do mow the lawns. We don't want roots and things. So you will see it again. I, I don't feel that we'd be bringing it as a supplemental appropriation, but it would be in the next budget, future budgets.
So now they're cutting them down and removing them, and then we have to remove the stubs.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Oh, that doesn't include the stump for now?
No, that's the, put it on the ground and get it out of there.
And what will they do with the wood?
Um, it's up to them at that point.
Okay, it's theirs. Okay. Rob, you had a question?
No, that was it.
Majority of them, I believe, are cottonwoods, so they're not really desirable.
Great for burning. Okay. No more questions? I'd support a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the supplemental appropriation of $14,000 for tree removal at Greenhorn Park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. City manager, report.
Um, just a couple of things. One is that I did go to the League of California Cities, a meeting with a couple of council members. I'll let them give more of the report than I I will, but I just wanted to mention that I thought it was a good conference. There was a lot of networking, a lot of good information on some of the current issues. So I, I thought it was worthwhile. I want to remind the council that we have on the 27th, which is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM, the Marijuana 101 meeting. And that will be held at another location that escaped me right now.
Miners Inn.
At the Miners Inn.
Oh.
Uh, we wanted to make sure that we had enough room if we have a lot of attendance at that meeting. And when we looked at what you'd have to do for the presentation in the theater, the little screen would look like a postage stamp, so...
Is that when the consulting groups coming back in? Is that...
That's correct. SCI will be doing that.
What time is it? 6:30?
Um, I believe it's 6 o'clock.
And you're not, you're not titling a joint workshop like the last one?
You will not, when I titled it, only a couple people caught it. When I sat down that night, she says, "What? Who did this? Nobody caught it." So thank you for at least mentioning.
So I'm glad you brought that up and, and, you know, we are tempted. We will ignore that. And then also tomorrow is the first day of autumn, so enjoy your last night of summer.
Feels like it. Dwayne?
Okay. I just wanted to say, I'm glad that we're cooling down. I know a lot of people don't like the cold weather, but I like the cold weather. In fact, this morning, I was up in, up in the mountains and I was actually in the snow already, believe it or not. So it was very refreshing to be up in the snow and out of the, out of the heat and smoke and everything else. It was very, really nice. Other than that, we've been, of course, doing more meetings on the homeless situation and we're making headway. We have some more coming up. And we'll keep you informed on that. But it looks like we're making some positive headway on that. Other than that, I got, oh, I wanted to mention one thing. I did want to question for city, do we, on the, the theater, community theater, I heard there's an issue with the heating and air conditioning. Do we have something that's getting resolved on that by any chance?
Matt's currently working on it.
Is it? Is he?
It's not good news.
It's not good news?
No, it's not good news. Not good news. We're, we're working through, there's, there's some immediate things that, that needed to be done. I think they've been done, but we have a failing system. And so...
Complete, where you can't use the heater part or the AC part?
You, it's, no, it's not that bad. But it might as well be.
You might do it, huh?
No, it's not.
Oh, gosh.
So we're, we're gonna be coming back to you with a an item on that so that we can get it repaired and have it, you know, heat and cool as appropriate, so...
That's all I got.
Rob?
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah, I was down at the League of California Cities with the city manager and the mayor. And it's very interesting things. But one thing that was alarming is a bill passed, the legislature, it's up to the governor whether he signs it or not, that allows the telecom companies to put a 35-foot square utility box in any public right-of-way with no input from the city and cap the fee at $250 maximum. And they can put a 21-square-foot box on a telephone pole. So I mean, it could be indicted with all kinds of these boxes throughout the city. The estimate city of Los Angeles is gonna have 16,000 boxes around the city. And so it's passed both houses, but hopefully the governor will veto it. There's about, close to 300 cities having a press conference on the steps of the Capitol with a lot of coverage from the media. So hopefully the governor will put the kibosh on that idea. Because to me, it just takes away more of our local control and it's a giveaway to the telecom industry, a big financial giveaway to them. But I'm sure they paid their lobbyists well and distributed a lot of campaign contributions and that's why they got the bill passed.
No.
Another issue is the homeless in Sacramento makes our problem minor, minor. Because I stay at the same motel every time I go down to Sacramento for a race or, you know, tax class. And I haven't been down there in two years. And so I did a couple mile run one day on the Sacramento River. And there's a lot of homeless there, tents and trash. And I'm amazed how much more in two years. Then the next day, did a little run on the American River the other way. And that was even worse. I was just needles along the bike path and just boughs of trash and just tents all up and down the river. And supposedly they clean it up every now and then, but then they come back within a couple days, it seems like. So that's a big issue that's more than just our city problem. So the other interesting item was I went to some, is how we reduce the fire risk by passing ordinance on illegal fireworks. Trying, not safe and sane fireworks, but the kinds of mortars and bottle rockets that people shoot off and put roofs on fire and vegetation on fire. And so they've worked it into administrative fine in some of these cities. And it's like a $1,000 offense if you have up to 25 pounds of illegal fireworks. And they're using social media apps for people to be able to report it. And they cite the property owner if they can tell what property it came from. Or the violators, they can determine who exactly was the violator. But it's having a definite effect in some other cities throughout the state, so. And it takes it out of the court system where it's an administrative thing. And then the fine could appeal to the city council. So it's something that I want to look at for the future.
Rob, can you add to that? Do we have any history here that you can draw from?
Do we have what?
Any history with Wairega having issues with the fireworks?
Well, I don't know if I can comment on a, on a, on a recent fire, the, the trees that caught fire. They were wondering what happened with that. So I don't know, I don't know where that investigation went. But I, I think we've been pretty lucky for the most part. But we always worry about it. Every 4th of July, the fire department goes out to the fairgrounds. You know, we do fire wash there. But we're also looking around on the hills because there are people shooting off fireworks everywhere. And we're thinking, maybe this is going to be the year. Maybe this is going to be the year. So, so far, we've been pretty lucky. But, yeah, there's, it's an issue here, too. There are people, I don't know where they're getting their stuff, but I mean, those are, those are big things that are firing off. And they're not, they're not in the fairgrounds because we're in the fairgrounds. And they're going off around in the hills.
They're saying they're coming from two sources through the ports, being imported from China or across the border from Mexico. They're coming in two sources and they're really getting sophisticated amounts of these fireworks. Big giant mortars and big rockets and things like that. So it's really exploded as a problem in other cities.
No pun intended. Yeah, so, so I don't know, you know, obviously the, the source problem is something that we can't address.
No.
But, but the people that are firing it off, I mean, you could, we could address that. I would imagine, and I'm sure there, we have ways of doing that already. They're just lucky so far that they haven't really caused anything big. Because those are big fireworks that are going off in places that they shouldn't be.
Right.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, I have a couple of notes. One's about all the events that are coming up this weekend. Apparently there's three things. One's the balloon fair, and I think there's a health fair. And I don't know what the third one is. Does anybody else?
Film festival.
Beer of Heights Fair.
Thank you, thank you.
What is it?
Film festival, festival?
Yeah, Flex Fest, or Flex Fest.
The Rex Center in Port James.
Yes.
Right, right, right.
So there's lots of things happening. And I wanted to put out a little notice about the Veterans Assistance Program as having a fundraiser dinner on October 7th at the fairgrounds in the Beer Garden. If anyone is interested, it's a good program to support, so. But I have nothing else.
As long as you're doing events, let me...
Please.
The, this Saturday, there's the Fallen Heroes, I think, event at the fair, at the fairgrounds? Is that, is that, do I have that right?
I don't know. Is it the one with Jennifer Bryan?
So I think this is the one where I think you need it, I think it's like a motorcycle run. And it's also, it's also something that'll, it's to raise funds for the, the prospective Fallen Heroes memorial that they're going to put out by the airport.
Okay, different projects.
So, yeah, I'm sorry I don't have more information. I know there, I know it was in the paper.
Poker Run?
I'm sorry?
The Poker Run?
The Poker Run, correct. And I think it was in the paper.
Oh, yes, it is going on this Saturday, yes.
It is the Saturday. So, so for anyone who wants more information, don't come to me. So what you want to do is you want to just Google Siskiyou County Daily News. I'm sure it's in there and you can find that article. So that's another thing that's going.
Okay. We good?
Good.
All right, thank you for coming.